We still waiting on Bob?
I'm on the phone with him right now, trying to get him logged on.
Okay.
Well, welcome everyone. We're starting a couple of minutes late. Welcome to the April 27, 2020 Merriam City Council meeting. This obviously is a virtual meeting on Zoom and so we'll have to make some adjustments in how we operate, but we should be pretty, pretty good. This would be the second time we've done this. So we'll start off by roll call.
Mayor Sizem.
Here.
Councilmember Debold.
Yeah.
Councilmember Hands.
Here.
Member Call doll. Here.
Here.
Councilmember Naff. Councilmember Neil. Councilmember Pape.
Here.
Councilmember Silver's.
Here.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Here.
Very good. We'll move into public items. In response to COVID-19 public comments that normally occur during the city council meeting have been temporarily suspended. Members of the public are still encouraged to share comments about matters that may or may not appear on the agenda. Please note that these comments will be taken via email to the city clerk prior to the meeting start at 6:00 PM actually on the date of the meeting. So I'll ask our city clerk if we had any public comments that was received.
We had no public comments, Mayor.
Okay, receiving no public comments. We'll move out of that area and move into our consent agenda. Our consent agenda, there will only be one item on our consent agenda. We're going to pull the item number two, which is the purchase of security camera system for a more lengthy discussion on a couple of items. So we really only have one item on the consent agenda. So I'll entertain, entertain a motion and a second to consider approval of minutes of the last meeting.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that remove the, that approve the council per consent item number one.
And I'll second.
Motion's made and seconded. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Debold.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Call doll.
Aye.
Councilmember Naff. Councilmember Neil.
All obtained. That wasn't fair.
Councilmember Pape.
Aye.
Councilmember Silver's.
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Aye.
Okay, that item was approved. We'll move on into the second item, which is consider approval of the purchase of security camera system for the new community center.
Any update on that?
Yes, I do have an update. A scope of work was included in your packet that went out on Friday. And substantially that scope of work is the same, including the total, but the first two cameras listed under the inside cameras had the wrong camera number included. And so an updated scope of work was distributed today. And the correct camera is the Access P324-LV and dash LV1. And these are the newer versions of the cameras that were originally in the scope of work. And like I said, there's no cost increase. I'm happy to answer any other questions.
Whitney. Be sure to, there you go.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I have a question about the licensing costs. So the licensing, I assume it's kind of like purchasing an Adobe license, right? Like you would have to renew it at some point. And as well as Genentech, which is very good at what they do. So I'm glad to see that they're on there. But I'm wondering which licenses will we have to renew and and we, I guess we can just start there and then I'll probably have a follow up.
Yeah. So what, how this works is you purchase the initial license for the camera and then you pay a maintenance fee annually on the camera. It's a percent of the total license cost and we do that for all of our cameras in the system. So every camera, we pay an annual fee for to connect it and that is paid for out of the IT budget annually. So that's just an ongoing maintenance cost of running our security system.
Okay. So essentially where we're going to be adding about 68 licenses.
Up with this, assuming we were going with the extra options.
Okay. And it doesn't matter which kind of camera it is, the licensing is the same for any of them. Cool. Um, and then I would assume there's a warranty with the equipment that's coming through ETI. And how long is the warranty for the equipment itself?
Your warranty.
Did you say five? Sorry.
Five years.
Okay. And this was all budgeted for, we just have to approve it because it's over that $100,000 threshold. I just want everyone to be clear about that who might be listening as well.
Yeah. No, this is a budgeted expenditure for the community center project. Any contract or purchase that's over $100,000 has to come to council for approval. So that's what this is.
Okay. That answers my questions.
Is there anyone else that has a question regarding this item? Okay. I don't see any hands, so I'll entertain a motion in a second.
I'd move that the council approved to sit agenda item number two.
I'll second.
Have a motion in a second, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Call doll.
Aye.
Councilmember Naff. Councilmember Neil.
Aye.
Councilmember Pape.
Aye.
Councilmember Silver's.
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich. Councilmember Debold.
Aye. And that motion passes. Nothing on a mayor's report. We will move into council items and under Finance Administration, first item is consider approval of franchise ordinance with Evergy Metro Incorporated. This is a first reading. Do we have anything to present on this?
Just, just a quick update. This is step two in a three-step process for renewing the franchise with Evergy formerly KC P and L. On April, at the April 13th meeting, the council approved a notice to electors that did, which is essentially notifying them that there would be the first reading and then a final potential, final approval that was published in the paper on April 21st, which is 20 days before the May 11th meeting. So we are in accordance with statute. The terms are the same 10 years, 5% grocery receipts on this particular franchise. We can't waive the first reading because it, because of the notification that went out on April 21st, but I'm happy to answer any questions about the franchise agreement.
Jason.
Yes, this is Jason. I was just curious because in the packet that was sent over, it had listed the newspaper three different ways, but didn't list what newspaper it is. Is it the Kansas City Star? That are, that are official city paper.
Yeah, the, the Merriam's official city paper is the legal record. It goes out every Tuesday. So any, when we need to meet publishing requirements, we use the legal record as many cities do. We don't do it in the Kansas City Star simply because of the cost.
Okay, thank you.
It's not the kind of website you may be used to looking at. So I can send it to you.
Right. If you ever want to copy, the city hall has a number of extra copies of that newspaper. You just want to see what it's like. It's mainly just notices. And there are some articles in there. It's kind of interesting. Any other questions?
I would like to follow up, Mr. Mayor. This is Whitney, if I can. So on the, at the April 13th meeting, I know Councilmember Silver's and I brought up some concerns that we may have had or questions about including solar provisions for residential solar customers in the franchise agreement. And I want to thank you, Mr. Dink, for sending the follow-up over to us about the solar or the, I think it's KSA 661265. And I don't know how I missed this, but I want to close the loop on that conversation. On April 3rd, the Kansas Supreme Court issued a ruling that the initial law from 1980 where it says you can't discriminate in pricing structure for renewable or customers who are generating their own energy and customers who are just pulling from the grid, like standard customers. They rejected the Evergy agreement that the KCCC approved, the KCC approved. So that takes care of any concerns that I may have had about the franchise agreement itself. So putting that up there, we still can't do anything, but I just wanted to make sure that that was followed up on.
Very good. Any other questions regarding, this is first reading only. There's no vote. But I'll make sure you have the opportunity to ask questions if there are any. We get another chance at our next meeting. If you have questions between now and then, certainly you can either contact our city administrator if you want to advance with questions or you can certainly bring them at the, to the next meeting. So if I don't hear any questions, then we'll just move forward into the next item, which is item number two. Consider approval of an ordinance authorizing sale, consumption and possession of alcoholic liquor during the Merriam Drive Live special event. This is also a first reading. Who would like to take the introduction on this?
I just promoted Anna to a panelist, so.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Let me start my video.
Hey.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Before you this evening is the first reading of an ordinance authorizing the sale and conception and possession of alcoholic liquor during Merriam Drive Live. This will be the third year of Merriam Drive Live. We are keeping our fingers crossed that this year is a dry event. We've not been successful with the weather in the past two years, but we are looking to offer the event the same as we did in the past with music and adult entertainment in the form of a court hole tournament as well as because of the cancellation of the Turkey Creek Festival 5K, adding a 5K to this event as well. There'll be yard games, food trucks, as well as potentially some other activities that we're exploring at this time. So tonight, we're just before you for the first read of this and we'll come back in two weeks with a final read and approval of this ordinance. And I'll be happy to entertain any questions. Included in the agenda was a copy of the boundary map. On the boundary map is the same as it was last year. It incorporates the IVFCC grounds as well as the marketplace.
Any questions about Merriam Drive Live? Again, first reading only.
Yeah, I have a question, Mayor. Yeah. Can we consider this a dry event if we're serving alcohol? Got a few smiles anyway.
I was groaning on mute.
Let's hope it's dry, at least from the weather's perspective.
Okay, that's on my head.
Any other serious questions? Okay, turning down and we're complete, conclude the first reading on that. Move third item on the finance administration, which is our monthly finance report.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just going to give a brief update on the finance report. This is the, this is the March report, which reflects January revenues. So what you have here is you've got our revenues from January and the good news is, is that sales tax were up 9% over 2019, which based on what's happening now, we're going to need every penny of that. That, that is a decrease over what we anticipated. So we budgeted that we'd actually bring in a little bit more, but we are nine, about nine and a quarter percent over where we were in 19, which is very good news. Cars were up about 12%, although Merriam Town Center's down a few points over 2019. But overall, January's numbers look very, very good. We heard good things about January and February. Unfortunately, just because of the lag in sales tax takes a couple of months. We won't really know where we are today until June, but in, but in terms of January numbers, we look, we look good. I'm happy to answer any questions that I can.
Jason.
At one point I know I was aware of the fact that CarMax was closed to, for business and then they reopened. Do we know, are the other car dealerships open and selling vehicles?
Great question. They are, the, the cert, they are open for service. They are open for online sales and they're open for appointments. So I don't know, I can't, that is our larger brand name dealerships. I do not know the status of the smaller dealerships. We, we did go and reach out to the larger dealerships so we could have a little bit more info when we made our projections, but yes, they are open for business, but we are anticipating quite a drop in sales just because they're, because their showrooms aren't open. That answer you?
Yes, this is Jason again. I did go past CarMax a few times early on just out of curiosity and I just wanted to report that it was pretty full with customers. So I'm hoping in a safe way that trend continued and across all the car dealerships and we won't see a big drop.
Agreed, agreed. CarMax is a, is a big dealership.
Any other questions on that, on the finance report? Obviously, we are still anticipating and speculating on how all these changes are going to impact our financial situation and factoring that into the budget. One of the things that Strangle did mention, maybe he's going to later this, this whole budget cycle is going to be very unique in the way it rolls out. Particularly for those of you that are new, you might not notice a difference, but for the rest of us, it will be different because of the different strains and challenges placed on us by this virus and the closure of businesses. So obviously we have a lot of business in Merriam, so this is going to impact us. We just don't know to what degree and for how long. So just bear with us. We may be anxious to know and again, a budget is, is kind of a speculative thing. It's kind of a guess, an educated guess. But this, this year, the rules have all changed. So I'm sure our city staff is trying to figure out how that, how that's all going to shake out. We're going to move into, if no other questions, move into Community Development Public Works CIP. We have one item, that's the Community Development Update.
Evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. Brian Dark, Community Development Director. On the update in community development, just, we're staying busy out there. First of all, the comp plan is a little up there and that we're, I'm working with Confluence, the consultants are working on that plan to make sure we continue a robust public engagement. Obviously, the pandemic's put kind of into some of that stuff. I shouldn't say in, but it's put a lot of that stuff on hold and been working with the contractor Confluence to make sure that we, you know, later on in the year, summer and the fall, we restart up the public outreach and make sure we get that public engaged. We've also have some plans if this pandemic continues for an extended period of time, which we'll of course hope it doesn't, to do some online, some electronic things, engagements and things like that. Code enforcement, staying busy. They're staying out in the neighborhoods, being visible. Building continues to be a, going at a good pace. All our big projects, Switzer Senior Villas, Reed Automotive Community Center continue to go forward, continue to have a lot of activity going on there. The last thing I have is, is sort of a sad thing. One of our members, John Hollis, is retiring. His last day in the office will be May 1st. He's got some vacation time that's going to be using to get to that retirement day. But if you want to reach out to John and tell him congrats, send him an email, drop him give him a phone call. I think you'd appreciate that. John wanted to come a low-key exit and we're honoring that, but I'd say situation is even more low-key than what any of us. So John, just a little bit about John. Some of you all have, had interactions with him. I think he's probably inspected some of your own personal projects and may have called him and asked questions about building codes and things like that. John, extraordinarily knowledgeable person when it comes to building codes. He's also very knowledgeable when it comes to planning. City Mayor for 23 years, started in 1997 as a building official. And he was the building official for 18 years. And then after that, he moved into the planner position. I want to try something a little new, a little different. So he's been in the planner position. Again, extremely knowledgeable, unique person and now he knows planning, zoning very well. He also knows building code very well. His leaving is going to leave a big hole in community development. So all the big projects out there, any of the commercial projects, he's probably been in every commercial building in the city of Merriam, except for a very small few of them. He's done the IKEA, the Cresview School, the Pepper Tree, Timber Ridge, Advent Health, the hospitals kept him busy. All those 23, 23 years. So again, he'll be leaving. May 1st will be his last day. And anybody wants to reach out to him, just drop an email. I think you'd appreciate that. And with that, that's all I have for this evening, Mayor.
Any questions about community development? No? Okay. Well.
I think I see.
Brian has.
Go ahead, Jason.
I was gonna say, I was saying Brian has his hand up, but his mic is off.
Brian, I am muted, you.
Okay. Genesis Health Club closed on March the 17th. Do you know if they've been able to make substantial progress with the gym being closed on their renovation?
Um, they have made progress. It's obviously, it's just been the contracting crew up there. So they have made project. I'll be, I'll be frank. The, the ownership likes to change plans quite a bit up there. So I think that's been a challenge for all of us. So that's one of the reasons why that project's perhaps extending longer than what any of us anticipated.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Bob?
Yeah, it's just a comment, Mayor. I was just going to concur with Brian and Reverend Stu. I worked very closely with Jim. Well, for many years as Fire Marshal itself and he's going to be greatly missed and he was very knowledgeable, very professional, so. Just, just want to come around that.
Have we got plans for his replacement yet? Or I hate to talk about that and we're talking about this. And by the way, couldn't have picked a better time in history to retire than right now, but how are we doing on that?
Sure, Mayor. Yeah, we have advertised the position. We have taken applications and resumes. Obviously, we're communicating, I should say, Stephanie with HR is communicating with applicants. We're doing some screens and things like that, but obviously we're also needing to hopefully start doing some in-person interviews when we have the ability to. And obviously we'll do those in a safe manner.
Very good. Okay. Any other questions?
I was just gonna, I think I said Jim's to John.
Yeah.
Talked about that afterwards. It was like, I think I said Jim, I said Jim McDonald, but John Hollis, obviously.
We know, we know what you meant. So we're good.
Thank you.
All right. Hearing none, no, I'll move out of this area and into staff items and see if Strangle has anything for staff items.
I have a couple of items to share. Just the first one, I just want everybody, everybody to know that staff is working on a recovery plan in terms of how we will reopen our facilities and how we will phase back in. Just to let everyone know that there will be triggers. This is going to be more of a dial than it will be a switch. As just like the economy, we will open up our buildings incrementally. Also, we have to look out for the safety of our residents as well as safety of our employees. We've got one more meeting in May and then we don't have a second meeting in May because of the holiday. We would anticipate right now, not to put any dates out there, but we would anticipate that we would be able to meet in person by June, we hope. But we, that's, that's still up in the air. But just to let everybody know, we are starting to figure out how to remobilize the troops back to where everyone is together, back in our, in our city facilities. As Mayor mentioned before, we are working to update the 20, the budget 2021 calendar. Likely what's, as I mentioned with the finance report, because of the lag in what we, in our revenues in terms of when we get notified, we won't know what April this month looks like until the last week of June. That creates a little bit of a problem when we're trying to build a budget and figure out what we can truly afford to put in the budget. I will let you know that we're structuring, that we are working internally on the budget. But as you can imagine, we're working multiple scenarios and if this, then this and what are the, what are, what are our bubble teams? What are the first ones in? What are the first things out? Depending on how these numbers all fall, fall, fall together, not fall apart, but but as opposed to bringing this to council and presenting a budget and saying this is a really great budget that you know, meets goals and objectives and then having to come back two weeks later at the last minute and say, oh, and we're going to yank item A, B, C, and D. Or have to, you know, potentially debate putting things in, then taking them back out after debating putting them in. We'd like to have those numbers first. So again, while we are constructing the budget, we will have a budget that will be ready to go as soon as we have those numbers. But what that means is likely we're going to have a couple of special meetings. We will likely have to meet, you know, we'll, we'll have to put a special Monday in there. We might meet three or four Mondays in a row, two of our normal council meetings with work sessions afterwards and then two before, I'm sorry, and then the, the alternate Mondays. But we will make sure that we get all this in front of the council and the public. It can be deliberated publicly. We can bring everybody up to speed on what, what's in the budget we're presenting and it's a budget that reflects our values, but also reflects our financial ability to support those things. But for, as Mayor said, those that have been through the process before know that, well, tonight we would normally be discussing CIP. We're clearly not discussing CIP tonight, although we internally are. So we will be pushing all those things back a bit. But I'm happy to answer any questions as we go between now and then about where our heads at. The issue is, is we just simply don't want to roll out a budget, then have to come back and say, hey, it's, it's worse than it was, or it's better than it was. That's, that's actually where I'm hoping we land. And based on our conservative budgeting, I'm assuming that it will be better than what we're, we're planning on. But I just wanted to share that with you. Any questions about the budget, about that process?
Scott, did you have a question?
Yeah. What was our deadline for turning in that budget? Is it August?
August 24th, it's 24th or 25th that it has to be served to the county clerk. Now there's a hearing that has to be had and there's noticing requirements. So generally we like to have that budget locked up by the beginning of August or the, the end of July. So we will be, like I said, we, we, we're going to be going hot and heavy here as soon as we, as soon as we get those numbers.
Yeah, I was gonna say, is, I mean, is that a possibility?
Oh, yeah.
True, true guess as to what's going on.
Well, there, there will be a guess factor to it simply, well, because what we'll, here's what we'll know. We will know what April looks like at the end of June, but we will know what May and June compare to April. And we can assume that it's better or worse, even though we may not have accurate numbers. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I'm gonna straddle it a little bit. Yeah, I understand.
If things start to open back up and April looks like it's a, you know, a decrease of X and we know that May, things started to open back up as we're anticipating. We know that April is the, is the low point and we can, we can somewhat guess accordingly. Again, we've got balances. We've got those, those rainy day funds that we've, you know, Cindy or Chicken Little, pretty much the sky is falling. She, she has prepared us well to weather the storm and that's, that's what we're doing. Not that we're going to not have to make tough decisions, but we'll be able to, we'll have options because we've got some balances.
Have we, have we heard anything from Stuart Little about this next possible stimulus package that's going to supposedly directed towards local government? Has we heard anything more or what?
Not a, not a lot from Stuart Little, but I would defer, we, our own council member David Neal has actually been on the, the leading edge of really advocating for not just Merriam, but all local government. He's been, he's been in contact with Stuart, or at least he's reached out to Stuart. And he's been in contact with our federal reps. If, if you have questions, I'm happy to let David make some comment if he's prepared to do so.
Yeah, I'm certainly, anything you specifically want to know, I'm happy to answer. What was your question?
Well, that, that, I don't want to take meeting time. David, I want to contact, I'll contact you separately and I'd like to visit.
Okay.
We're good. Now we don't take this meeting time. Thank you.
Yeah, there, there's a lot of stuff going on. So yeah, definitely.
I want to, yeah, I want to hear some things. Thank you.
Last item I have for a Last item I have, before I turn it over to Meredith, we had a shout-out today from the governor. I don't know if anybody streamed or saw the governor's press conference today, but the Marion birthday parades got a shout-out as a great things that Kansans are doing to help Kansas. So that was really, really cool. Was glad to hear that. And good, good acknowledgement, recognition for our PD, but also just our city to be, set the example for other cities around Kansas. So I wanted to share that. I believe it's at the 11:30 mark or 11:45 mark, if you, you happen to be able to stream that or find it on Facebook somewhere.
It's linked from all of our pages right now.
Okay, there, there, absolutely.
It's everywhere.
Okay, that, that, I, I'm happy to answer any questions before I turn it over to Meredith to give a community center update. Any questions for, for me?
I have one comment I'd like to make before we move on. And you mentioned about conservative approach on the budget. We have historically taken a very conservative approach on our budget. That's why our reserves are, are very healthy, at least under normal circumstances. And we'll take the same approach, I'm sure, as we move through this budget. Now, there are some downsides to having an overly conservative budget, and that is we, we restrict ourselves from the potential that might be out there that we don't recognize. But there's a saving grace because there is a process called that brings about budget amendments. So if we hit the mark low and we decide, you know what, we got the money and there's something that needs to be done, and this is something that would have been in our budget if not for this horrible virus, we have the means for which to re-acquire the funding through a legal process to the state and, and gather those funds and go forward with those projects. So it's, it's a risk in a way, but being conservative certainly is the best approach because it's always easier to add stuff after the fact than it is to budget, take the risk of budget, budgeting and then not having the funds to cover it. So just want to bear, kind of throw that out there. So I'm ready, Meredith, did you want to talk to us about what's going on?
I, I think it looks like Bob has a question first.
Oh, I'm sorry. Bob?
For Chris, in reference to, I understand that we're gonna be, we weren't able to do the CIP tour this year, obviously because of the COVID. But I understand there's a drone video that's gonna be put together. Will, will we still be receiving our packets of kind of all those projects and what's going on? Because I, I might like to also just go out and drive by those things myself, and maybe the other council people will too, so.
Yeah, absolutely. What we still plan to, I mean, we still plan to roll all of the information out, all of the packets that we've given in the past, that we will just, as opposed to doing it and then meeting again three weeks later, as we've done traditionally, you know, we start in April and we really go till July, we're just gonna compact it all. But specifically to CIP, we have used the drone, we have video footage, we're going to create a virtual, virtual CIP tour that, to, to go along with the project pages. And I don't, I'm not positive if it's gonna be every single project. As you know, when we go out on CIP tour, or at least for, for those that have been on the CIP tour, we really take multiple years worth of projects because we're only working one or two, three projects a year. So we show basically what's been done, what we're doing and what's projected. So I, I don't know that we'll have the full 17 to 18 projects, but we actually went out and, and took video footage and we're gonna do a little voiceover and some animation. My understanding is that, that they're working on, the, the video footage has been put together, it's been edited, and what they're doing is the voiceover and the, and the sheets are complete. We're just trying to match them all up, but absolutely, we're gonna push all that stuff out. It'll be, it'll be available to the council and the public.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, Meredith, your turn.
Great. And so as you can imagine, wrapping up a large construction project in the middle of a global pandemic is catching up with us a little bit. And so, construction is still happening at the site over here by City Hall. We still have a number of people there every single day working. Unfortunately, we have some supply chain issues that are putting us on a delay. So these are things that should be at the site already that because of various reasons with their manufacturers haven't arrived yet. And they're pretty critical pieces. The first one is the decorative wooden ceiling that is over the kind of main corridors and the community center wing. And that doesn't feel like it's a critical piece, but it has to be in the space for a certain period of time before it can be hung. It impacts how building completion work can happen around it, so we're having to resequence things a bit. And the fire panel, which we can't open to the public until that arrives, is, hasn't arrived yet, and the manufacturer hasn't been able to give us a timeframe for when that's coming. So we can move into the building because the fire suppression systems are up, we just can't open or have staff working there on a regular basis. And then the other critical issue is the tile for the indoor pool was supposed to have shipped right before this all started. And we are unsure where that tile is in the, in the delivery process right now. And until the factory reopens, and we can't get a good piece of information about that. And we did try to look at if there's another tile that we can put in that would be just as good, or, you know, a different color, but can keep us more on track. And unfortunately, just the way things are right now, we're not able to get anything any quicker. So all that to say, from a construction perspective, we're looking at right now about a three-week delay, assuming that everything, you know, kind of picks up when we think it's gonna pick up and get delivered. So if you think about that in terms of dates you've heard already, we had been talking about opening the building on June 1st to charter members, and what it looks like now, and this is disclaimer, not a hard and fast number. It will probably change as we know more about the public health perspective of opening a community center. But probably June 22nd would be when charter members could get in, and then the following week would be when we would open to the public. So three-week delay on construction as it stands today. The other thing we're still trying to work through is what it looks like to actually open to the public. There are a lot of various guidelines right now. If you've been following the White House's opening sequencing, Johnson County is working on some opening sequencing, about how gyms can open, about different group gathering sizes, what it's gonna look like for pools to open. And, and we just don't have good information about that yet to be able to set a new opening date. We're gonna have to see how we move through the opening sequence on a community level to be able to give a better date for that right now. So we kind of have two tracks going. It could be possible that we have a completed building that we are not able to open to the public because of public health restrictions. But we'll just have to keep everybody updated on that as we work through it. So the big question we get because of this is what happens to our charter memberships and what happens if I've purchased a membership already? So if you have an existing membership to the Irene B French Community Center that we had to put on hold because we paused, you will get that time on a membership at the new community center. So you'll be able to finish out your membership there. If you have purchased a charter membership, your 12 months won't start until the building opens to the public. So we're gonna keep selling charter memberships right up to the day that we open to everybody. So if people want to get a discounted rate on that membership, they'll be able to do that until we officially open to the public. But then the clock on that won't start until we open to the public. And then we also have a summer membership, which is basically a 100-day membership between Memorial Day and Labor Day, and that will be available as well. It's a discounted rate, and so you'd be able to purchase that. And it, the timeline on that would start when the building opens as well. And so we're trying to make sure that we take care of the people who have bought memberships already, we'll begin communicating some of that, this to them this week, and putting some details out on our social media and marketing pages. And, but it's, we're, we're just kind of playing things by ear right now until we know more details about actually setting a date. And I think the other important thing to know is initially, the Irene B French Community Center was slated to close May 15th and not reopen after Turkey Creek Festival because we were beginning our move-in sequencing for the new building. It's probably very likely with the public health restrictions that that building won't reopen before we move into the new building. But that's something that we are monitoring right now and will provide an update on as we know more there as well. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you have about that. And like I said, all this information will be put out via our city communications channels, so you'll be able to share it with your constituents as well.
Jason?
Yes, this is Jason. This might have been a question for Anna, and I should have asked it earlier, but how are the charter membership sales go?
Anna, I'm just gonna turn on your audio real quick so you can answer that. If you unmute yourself, you're on.
I got it, thank you, sorry.
That's okay.
Um, we are still getting regular requests. Obviously, it has slowed significantly with the stay-at-home order, but we are still, I think we've up to about 83 requests for memberships. Part of the delay in that is people coming in and actually having to prove residency. Some are able to do that through technology and some are choosing to wait until the doors are able to be open and they can visit us in person.
Thank you, Anna.
Any other questions for Meredith?
If, if I could, this is Chris, just, just to add to that, I think it's important to keep in mind also about the, the impact that what our neighbors will be and may not be doing to their pools this summer. Clearly, we have to put water in our pools to accept our pools. Clearly, we're going to move forward with our facilities. We have indoor pool, we have an outdoor pool, they have water in it. But there are conversations starting to happen just because of the delays because of the pandemic, that some, some cities are, depending on how long this goes, they're asking the question of, one, can they open? Two, if this were to go into July, in terms of not being able to have 50 people together, is, is it worth opening? Now, those are, as far as I know, those are things happening at staff levels, those are not things that are happening. They're just conversations as we're all having about what, what, what do operations look like as we move through this reopening? But I think that the, I think it's important to keep in mind that there will be some sort of an, some sort of an impact likely, depending on what our neighbors do versus what we do that we just need to be mindful of. We may not know exactly what that means, but for example, if, and I'm not saying that our neighbors are not going to open their pools, but if they were not to open their pools and we open our pools, what does that do to our attendance? What does that do to our pool and our patrons? Those are just things that, those are things that, that Anna is, and, and myself and other managers are just trying to wrap our heads around. Meredith, I mean, we're, we're all trying to figure out what this looks like. So there very likely could be weird impacts of how long this, the, the duration of this, this event lasts and how long it takes to unwind the economy, or I'm sorry, to wind, to rewind the economy and open all of these things back up. So just as a heads-up, that, that we very likely could have weird conversations about what makes sense, and it won't be in a vacuum, it very well could be things that make sense just in, in light of what's going on in Johnson County. So that's just, just a heads-up.
Jason?
And so I assume that means that the whole super pass conversation will start over again next year in that scenario.
Well, that's, that's a great, great question. We, we've actually, as we've talked about that, there is a, there's just been the conversation about, for the, the cities that are in the super pass this year, about should they undo the super pass this year, simply because if you have one city that feels that they can open and another city feels they can't, you're going to migrate, you potentially are going to migrate a lot of people to just those open pools and overwhelm those, those facilities. So yeah, super pass is clearly something that is, at least in Northeast Johnson County, a topic of discussion.
I might add one thing. I'm, I met with, or spoke with Commissioner Iler with county, and he's involved in this committee, subcommittee to try to decide how they're going to restart any kind of opening discussions. And he was concerned primarily about our city pool and the fact that we have a new community center and what we're gonna do and how we're gonna do it. I assured him that we would, we would follow whatever protocol the county decides upon because it's based on health and what's appropriate. The, I guess there's four phases to the opening, and I think swimming pools are in phase three, something like that. I'm, I'm just kind of going based on the, on the very short dialogue we had, but I asked him, I said, why in the world is, I mean, I'm, maybe I'm showing my ignorance here, why is swimming pools so far out concerning the different businesses and entities that are opening? And he said it had to do with social distancing concerns. Apparently, small children and, and large swimming pools don't really care about social distancing, and that's the problem. And so that's what they're struggling with, and they're all struggling with it. We kind of ran a unique situation because we have a new facility that's coming on board, but believe me, all the cities are having a really tough time with this. This is really impacting how Parks and Rec moves forward with this in terms of hiring staff and everything else. And nobody knows what they're really doing because this is the first time this has ever happened. So, I mean, I know you guys are all gonna have the patience that you need, and you're gonna trust that staff does their, their work, but I can tell you, this is not just a bunch of people sitting around waiting for somebody to make a decision. It is very involved, it's very integrated, people are engaged, they're trying to figure out what's right, they want to be cautious, they want to do what, do the right thing. So we just have to be patient during the process. So that's all I have to say on it. Anything further regarding staff items?
I don't, I don't have anything else.
Whitney?
I just want to thank the staff in state and county representatives for everything that they're doing to help people out who are furloughed or have been laid off or struggling to get into the unemployment system or anything like that. I know Jared Ozzley especially has been working his tail off while he's not getting paid because he's not in Topeka to help a bunch of people get benefits and get everything set up. So thank you to anybody who's here, anybody who might watch this or anything like that for helping push all of that massive amount of human questions and, and applications through the system.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Do we have any new business, Mr. Ringel?
No, sir.
There are no executive sessions planned, so if there's no other business to discuss, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
This is Chris. I would love to make the motion to adjourn.
Second?
Oh, second, Scott Debo.
Postman's second? Non-courts, in your hand.
All in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
See you next month.
Good seeing everybody.
Very good.
Take care.